Good evening and welcome to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five Eugene Planning Commission Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. My name's Jason Lear and I'm Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission. To begin this evening, I'd like to call on Commissioner Edwards for the city's land acknowledgement statement.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Lear. Since time immemorial, the Kalapulia people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between eighteen fifty-one and eighteen fifty-five, Kalapulia people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as the Kalapulia Ilehi. Kalapulia descendants are the citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon and the Confederated Tribes of the Siletz Indians of Oregon. They continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who are, who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. Therefore, the planning commission recognizes that what we do today will affect the many generations who will come after us.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Edwards, and thank you to everyone joining us in this virtual meeting format. Today, we'll be deliberating and possibly making a recommendation on two different requests. The first item up for deliberations is for the East Campus Proposed Refinement Plan Amendment, Code Amendment and Zone Change Requests. City File Numbers RA-2501, CA-2502, and Z-2503. The second set of applications we will deliberate on are further proposed land use code amendments for the public health standards, City File CA-2503. Following deliberations, if time allows, we'll vote for a new chair and vice chair, although we've considered maybe postponing that to the next meeting, just given that we don't have the full commission present tonight. Anyone wishing to join the meeting online can do so by following the instructions listed on the agenda for this meeting. Planning Commission meetings can also be viewed by watching the livestream available on our website or the broadcast on Camp Cast Channel twenty-one. So for the first agenda item, which is deliberations and possible action on East Campus Code Amendment, refinement plan, and zone change, I'd like to turn it over to Bray Black for a brief introduction before getting into deliberations. Bray?
Thank you. I will share my screen really quick. Let's hope this works. Let's see. Okay. Okay. Is that showing up all right for everyone?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. So, good evening, Planning Commission and anyone watching tonight. I am Bray Black, Associate Planner with the city of Eugene, and I'll be facilitating the discussion for this agenda item. So tonight, you'll be deliberating and possibly making a recommendation to City Council on a package of applications proposed by the University of Oregon, which include a refinement plan amendment, code amendment, and zone change that will apply to the East Campus area. On October twenty-first, we had our public hearing for these applications, and during the public hearing, the planning commission received public comments and had a chance to ask questions of staff. Staff addressed many of the questions that came up at the public hearing, as well as in the agenda item summary and the memorandum included as attachment E to the agenda item summary for tonight's meeting. To help facilitate deliberations tonight, staff has identified three topic areas that have regularly come up in planning commissioners' questions, public testimony, or otherwise, that may be helpful for the planning commission to deliberate on. Since it's been a couple of weeks since the public hearing, I'll provide a very brief summary of each of these recommended discussion points, and following the presentation, staff will assist in facilitating discussion of these items and any other items the planning commission identifies. So first, I'll provide a summary of the proposed zone change and refinement plan redesignation. The requested zone change would remove the East Campus overlay from the nine properties shown in green here, which are located north of East Fifteenth Avenue, just south of Mathieu Night Arena. The base zoning of all nine properties is PL public land, which the applicant does not propose to change, and some of these properties are also zoned with the SR site review overlay zone, which is also not proposed to change. The hatched area here is the area that would be impacted by the proposal to re-designate eleven subject properties from limited high-density residential, limited institutional, to institutional on their refinement plans land use diagram. This change is intended to reflect existing and planned institutional uses on the subject properties, which are uses associated with the functions of the university. I'll note that the redesignation of nine out of the eleven lots is necessary for the zone change because the current boundaries of the East Campus overlay match the boundaries of the limited high-density residential, limited institutional designation in the refinement plan. Request for a zone change is required to be consistent with the applicable refinement plan, so the proposal to re-designate these properties to institutional necessitates that the East Campus overlay is removed from the property zoning and vice versa. I also want to emphasize before we move on that the applicant is not proposing to change the metroplan designation of the properties, which is government education, so the base zoning, any other overlay zones, and the metroplan designation of these lots would remain the same. Next, I'll walk through the proposed changes to the residential transition area. So as we discussed during the hearing, the residential transition area is intended to provide a buffer between campus and adjacent residential properties by limiting building height to be shorter than the rest of the East Campus overlay. The R1 zone, shown in yellow here, is subject to a maximum building height of thirty feet, with some exceptions to allow additional height. Then the residential transition area, which is the pink area shown here, building height is also currently limited to thirty feet, and the applicant proposes to increase that height limit to forty-five feet. The residential transition area is currently measured sixty feet from the boundary of the low-density residential zone, so to help mitigate the potential impacts of the proposed increases in building height allowance, the residence transition area is proposed to be expanded to be measured seventy-five feet from property zone R1. So the blue dotted line here represents the proposed new boundary of the residential transition area. The third recommended discussion point is the proposed changes to the text of the Fairmount University of Oregon Special Area Study. As I mentioned during the public hearing a couple weeks ago, the primary goal of the proposed refinement plan amendment is to update refinement plan policy direction to align with the university's current goals for housing production and citing of student housing. As a reminder, the land use diagram in the Fairmount University of Oregon Special Area Study includes several land use designations, each of which designates a certain area for a specific type of development. One of these designations is limited high-density residential, limited institutional, which covers the same area as the East Campus overlay zone. So first, to simplify references to the limited high-density residential, limited institutional designation, the applicant proposes to change the designation name to limited institutional. The proposed refinement plan amendment would also amend the provision in the land use diagram text that currently prohibits student dorm uses within the renamed limited institutional area to allow dormitory uses to be developed on land within that area. Otherwise, the applicant does not propose any other changes to the uses allowed within this designation. As is shown in Attachment B to the agenda item summary, many of the proposed text changes are non-substantive updates to names and terms referenced in the plan and are simply intended to modernize the language of the refinement plan. So hopefully that was enough of a refresher on these aspects of the proposal, and before we begin deliberations, I want to note that, as referenced in the draft findings that staff provided, the proposal appears to meet applicable approval criteria, which is why staff have recommended approval. I also want to let you know that staff included a possible motion in the agenda item summary and would be happy to share it on screen if you'd like. So I will stop sharing now. Okay.
Thank you, Bray. Thank you for that information. So we will now open for deliberations on this topic. Staff's outlined some of the deliberation topics for this evening. Before we move into those topics, are there any additional items that commissioners would like to add, or any questions for staff? Don't see any hands at the moment, and we'll have plenty of chance to discuss this. Also, staff provided a recommended motion in tonight's AIS. If anyone would like to put that motion on the table, you may do so now, and I think the idea here is then that we would deliberate on that motion and have a substantive debate on that basis. Does someone want to put that forward, or do we have any other ideas? Commissioner Edwards?
Um, I was just hoping maybe we could, I probably have a couple of questions. I guess I was expecting a little bit more from staff in the sense of responding to some of the specific some of the specific testimony that we received since the last meeting that, that does specifically address the approval criteria and where some of, like specifically the Fairmount neighbors and others that had drawn attention to certain things, and I would, I'd be curious to hear your response to that, and I kind of have them lined out, but I don't, I'm not ready to make a motion, but I really just do kind of want to hear why or why not they maybe are incorrect, because it actually, it's a little bit confusing, and I'm not going to lie, this was very dense, and I spent a lot of time and I needed a little bit of help. So anyhow, I just, I feel more comfortable if we can just maybe get some questions answered before there's a motion out there.
Okay. So did staff want to respond to that, or did you have some specific stuff you wanted to walk through, Commissioner Edwards?
I can, I can, I can attempt. So what, give me a minute here. So I made some notes that the assertion that the refinement plan amendments Okay, sorry. Let me, let me go back here. I tried to write out some thoughts, and they're not super clear at the moment. Okay, let's talk about the refinement plan. I guess that's a good starting point. So there appear to be some contradictions in the policies of the refinement plan related to the eighty-foot, eighty-five-foot height. There. I don't want to read this verbatim because it's confusing to me as it is. Allowing eighty-five-foot dormitories, lifting the prohibition on dorms in the low-density L1 transition area, and raising transition zone heights is a contradiction of the policies in the refinement plan that it was designed to preserve the, 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 the transition area, which the refinement plan outlines. It's, it's in contradiction to that. Sorry, Bray. I know I'm kind of like, I'm struggling, like, I'm, I just, I need a little bit of help just to kind of understand this stuff, so anyhow.
Right, no problem at all.
Walk us through a little bit more. Thank you.
Yeah, right. Thank you so much. So, did you have a chance to check out the memorandum that we submitted into the record a couple of weeks ago, by chance?
Well, it was all in there. So yes, I would imagine yes.
Okay. And so the reason I ask is, I was trying to figure out if this was policy that I had addressed in that memo, or if it was a different policy that maybe you found in the refinement plan. And it's a little difficult, too, because the refinement plan that we have available to us is not the updated finalized copy, because it doesn't include changes made by the amended ordinances. So I recognize that that can also present some difficulty in navigating those policies.
Well, and so that's why I'm asking is like, based on, based on some of the testimony, I just, I guess I'm asking for a specific response to the assertions that are being made and why they're maybe incorrect.
Right. So we looked back through the most updated version of their refinement plan text, and staff did not identify any policies that appear to serve as mandatory approval criteria. We didn't identify any policies that direct the city or the university to quote-unquote "preserve" the single-family character of the low-density residential areas near campus. And so we did not find any policies in the refinement plan that appear to be contradicted by the proposal.
Okay. Okay. All right. That's, that's really the only question I have at the moment.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I know that there was one specific, I think it was a goal that was identified in the testimony, and so the other thing that I walked through in that memorandum is the difference between policies and goals, and both of those terms are defined in the refinement plan glossary, which I believe has not been amended by any of the amending ordinances. And so the difference is basically that goals have not been adopted by the city council. They don't function, from our point of view, they don't function the same way as front-end policies. So there are, there is content in the refinement plan's goals that is related to, you know, orderly development of the university's land and such, but there's nothing in the policies that we could find.
Could you direct me on the memorandum? I am looking at the full, I'm looking at the record, and I'm looking at all the documents. There's all the batches of testimony. I think what's challenging is that we get this testimony, and then when staff responds, it's not always in the order that makes sense. That's really hard, because I was, I was just trying to take it all in and you know, I think can you tell me where the memorandum is and I can scan through that?
So are you in the PC official record folder?
I am.
Great. So it is in the folder number five, Planning Commission Deliberations Materials.
Okay, wait a minute.
It was also included as attachment to the
On the AIS?
Right. And so that's, that's where the copy of the AIS is.
Okay. So I, I read it there.
Okay.
Just, just for a little bit of helpful context, too, and this is what was kind of touch base in the memo, is that the refinement plans are interesting. Each one operates a little bit differently, and so whenever we approach these, you're kind of running into like a little bit different ways that they function, but at the beginning, they all start with a thing that tells you how to, how to use the refinement plan in the context of decision-making. And so when staff looks at this, we try to focus on those things that have bearing on the application itself, which in this case, for the Fairmount University Plan, are those things that are listed truly as policies, right? That's what it says that we're supposed to rely upon. And so staff, it's always our goal to stay in our lane and stick to what is relevant to our approval criteria. And so sometimes I, you know, I apologize that it can be frustrating when it's like we don't answer everybody's questions, but a lot of, but sometimes things are just a little bit outside of what we would consider the purview of influencing the decision making here. And so those provisions that are being referenced within the refinement plan weren't those specific things identified as policies that helped guide us to this decision point. They might be helpful context, but staff didn't really find that those were tools that we could use to demonstrate a reason to approve, modify, or deny an application such as this, if that's helpful.
Yeah. I'm gonna let others go.
Okay. I saw you put your hand up and pull it back a few times, Commissioner Beeson. Well, I'll get Commissioner Bailing's question and have you go next. Commissioner Bailing?
Thank you. I just wanted clarification from you, Chair Lear. You called for a motion. Do we do the motion and then deliberations, rather than deliberate?
I think the idea there was that we would put the motion suggested by staff on the table, and then we would debate and deliberate based on the motion being front and center there.
All right. Then I move to recommend that the Eugene City Council approve the refinement plan amendment, code amendment, and zone change application, and adopt the proposed amendment to the refinement plan and the land use code as included in attachments B and C to the agenda item summary.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailing, and we'll wait on an actual vote, but it will take a second if somebody is willing to make
I'll, I'll second that.
Thanks, Commissioner Beeson, and now we can kind of go back to our questions and deliberations. So Commissioner Beeson?
Yeah, I was putting my hand kind of up and down, and I was, I wanted to echo Commissioner Edwards' question. I, I went through all the material. I think I had found that it was the Exhibit E to the AIS, it's the memo that's being talked about, that addressed a lot of the testimony that was brought up or some of the questions, and I wanted to say a couple of things about it. I found it very, very responsive. I had raised a question. There was some testimony provided, both spoken and also some of the follow-up testimony, I think, that came from the neighborhood group about that there were policies in the refinement plan that might keep us from doing this. So I think if I felt like it was good, staff went back and looked, and we've just talked about that, and it was in the memo, that there really wasn't anything found that would keep us, that prohibited us from moving forward on this action. The other main items that were in there, I think is the, take all the testimony, I think in general, there's been quite a bit expressed about concern about building heights and then also about transportation. So I wanted to say I appreciated Bray and the other, the other staff, and also I think Colin McCarthy had a memo and some material in there. There was some material from Ralph Brokaw. There was just quite a bit of material that I found pretty well organized and kind of on point and addressing those issues that were brought up. So I wanted to, I guess, point that out and also appreciate that. So that's a comment I've got for now. I'll have some more here in a minute.
Thanks, Commissioner Beeson. Commissioner Yang?
I guess from reading the memo, which is the attachment E, my sort of takeaway impression was that there's a different kind of threshold or burden of, you know, proof that's different here. I guess what we are trying to do is trying to focus on the approval criteria, and I guess that the application has met that burden. And so I think that it's lower than what's discussed in the memo about, you know, the goal, and it talks about the goal for the Fairmount area study, and I guess that is something that, you know, we strive for, but it's not the threshold that we have to meet. I mean, that's a higher threshold, is my impression. And I want to see if that's accurate, kind of understanding. And if not, please correct me.
Thanks, Commissioner Yang. That's a really good reflection of how those, how the refinement plan policies operate within the context of this type of land use decision. The only thing that I would say is that we, the findings, you know, staff drafted those findings, you know, based on that, staff does recommend that we believe the applicant has demonstrated that they meet the approval criteria. That doesn't mean that you have to necessarily agree with us. That's deliberations are all about you kind of vetting those materials before you and vetting those findings, and deliberations kind of help us work through whether you find the same outcome that staff found, because we're here to kind of help you navigate this process as a part of the decision-making procedures.
I, I wanted to ask kind of a finer point question built off of those last few questions from the other commissioners, which is, and I agree with, I thought the staff did a good job of focusing us on the approval criteria, and I think I agree with the analysis that was presented there. What, what is the legal implication of that previous refinement plan? Because that's something that a lot of folks were sort of focused on, and I mean, is that something that we can use to guide our decision at all, or should it really just be focused on the approval criteria based on code?
So whenever the word "legals" thrown out, I always want to allow Lauren Summers to weigh in if she needs to. However, you know, when we're looking at a quasi-judicial land use decision like this, like we are focused on what is within the approval criteria. That is how we make the, the basis for our decision-making. The, the approval criteria, you know, it doesn't say simply that it just says you need to be consistent with the refinement plan. And then, like I said earlier, each refinement plan kind of, kind of directs us how to use it in the context of the decision-making process. And so in this instance, the Fairmount University Plan talks about how to use the policy, specifically the policies within the decision-making process. And so that kind of helps us navigate to that question. And then the other thing is that we're, it's not supposed to make the plan otherwise internally consistent. So those are kind of the two factors within the approval criteria related to the refinement plan. And so that's kind of what we focus on within the criteria. Lauren, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. So obviously, I kind of feel like if anyone has any other questions for staff, feel free to ask them, and otherwise, if you have any deliberative points or would like to kind of discuss your analysis of it, this would be a good time to do it. I guess I would just mention, as I did a moment ago, that I thought the materials were really well prepared, and it was not something that I don't think anybody is going to necessarily be able to fully wrap their heads around, but I felt pretty comfortable with the material after reviewing the previous AIS and then after the last presentation. And while it is super complex, it did appear to meet the approval criteria as articulated by the staff to me. I do see that there might be some conflict with the previous refinement plan and with some of the plans articulated by the university twenty or forty years ago, but, you know, land use is something that's going to be changing and evolving, so I don't necessarily expect that the neighborhood will kind of be frozen in time from where it was twenty years ago or twenty-five years ago. And also felt the, the testimony, you know, was really compelling on all sides, and everyone was really respectful, and it was fantastic discussion. But the, the, the testimony from folks affiliated with the university definitely had an impact on me for sure, and it was interesting to see all the students and other folks come out and feel really passionately about the need to continue expanding on-campus housing opportunities. And then I'd just add one more deliberative point myself that I do think that all housing is sort of connected, and that offering more on-campus housing is a way to relieve some of the burden on off-campus housing. Commissioner Bailing?
Did we address the deliberation points that Bray showed in the beginning of her presentation? There were three, and I believe one of them had to do with transportation, and I'd just like to swing back and get assurances that we're actually responding to all of them.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Bailing. I was actually just about to, we've been kind of, you know, as we're listening to this, thinking about, you know, what additional topics we might want to deliberate on tonight. So it sounds like we're getting to a point where we're ready to kind of move through the Bray's identified topics, with the addition of potentially transportation as another topic of discussion there that we can add to that list. As a point of order, if you don't mind, Chair Lear, I did want to get confirmation from Commissioner Bailing, just regarding the, her ability to watch the public he, she was not in attendance at the night of the public hearing, but in order to participate tonight, just confirmation from her, and she was, she provided it to us in writing, but just confirmation tonight for everybody that she watched the public hearing, she's reviewed all the relevant materials. So Commissioner Bailing, if you could provide that confirmation, much appreciated.
Yes, I did. And as you probably know, I have difficulty staying in my lane also.
Much appreciated for the confirmation. So I think with that, if we want to move into just a little bit more facilitated conversation, the first item that we brought forward was just whether there were any questions or deliberation points on the zone change or the plan designation changes from the commissioners. See a lot of head nods.
Thanks for putting that back on the screen, Bray.
Chair Lear, if it's okay with you, it sounds like there's silence on that first one.
Yeah. Anybody have any comments or questions specifically on the proposed changes to the residential transition area? Mr. Beeson?
Let me make a couple of comments about that. I focused in, I quite a bit on the code amendment, on adding the dorms as the additional use and the increase in building height in the transition zone and changes in the building heights in that transition zone. I, a couple, a couple of things, I, I went through the testimony as best I could. One thing that I clarified, and I guess I'd want to clarify One thing that I clarified, and I guess I'd want to clarify, there is, this, this really kind of all has to do with the east campus overlay. We're losing part of it north of 15th with the zone change. The rest of it, I think, basically remains intact. And I, I think that one observation I want to make is there is, and I'd want to be corrected here if I'm wrong, but there is no change in what I would call the footprint of that east campus overlay. So the size of it or the dimensions of it and the, I guess, the precise location of it are staying the same. The changes, one change is that that transition zone is going from 60 feet to 75 feet there on the east side and on the south side. And then there, there, there are also, the code changes is allowing the increase in the building heights in there from 30 feet up to 45. Kind of a detailed note on that, and Bray mentioned this. Yeah, out in the R1, they, we talk about the maximum height being 30 feet and the caveat that given the, the roof, the building could actually go up to 37 feet depending upon roof pitch and so on. So sometimes we talk about it as 37 feet. I believe, I couldn't find anything to refute this. I'm making the assumption when they talk about 45 feet is the maximum height in the transition zone, it's 45 feet. So I'm assuming that we're basically going from 30, maybe 37, up to 45. And in a 75 foot transition zone, I'm, one comment I would have about it, I, I, to me, when I, I look at what it was originally intended to be as a transition zone, the idea now in 2025 is we go back and revisit all this and given all of the discussions we've had over time about middle housing and all the things going on with, with housing in our community, the idea of raising that maximum height up to 45 feet to accommodate what I might call kind of middle housing or accommodate multifamily structures, which I think is the way they talked about it in the material, I, I think is, is, is a very good idea. And I also think it's, it's consistent maybe with where we are in looking at these kinds of things in the community now. I'm, this is just my opinion, but all of the conversations we have about urban growth strategies and so on, the idea of this transition, it still is a transition zone from R1, low density, transitioning over 75 feet with up to the 45 foot height and then to the, up to what would be proposed as the 85 foot height in the rest of the overlay zone. So I, I kind of find that it's a, it makes more sense to me as a transition zone in that respect. And I guess that's kind of what I wanted to say about it. I think it, it still feels like they're, they're working to accomplish the original intent of that of having this overlay zone on the perimeter of the campus and providing this transition from the R1 that's out there in the city and on to the, to the campus proper.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeson. Any other comments about item two on the screen there, proposed changes to the residential transition area? Let's move on to item three, which is proposed refinement plan text amendments. Anyone have any specific comments or questions focused on this item? Not seeing any here. And then the final item for our deliberations discussion is transportation in the east campus area. And I know there was some discussion about the extent to which the transportation analysis reflected that there wouldn't be any substantive change. And we had the opportunity to chat about that for a second in briefing. So does anyone else have any other questions about that or, or thoughts about that? Well, I guess I'd open it up more generally than to deliberate on the motion before us. Does anyone else have anything else that they would like to share? Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, I'd just like to share, I, I, I'm just kind of struggling to sort through. I, I know that staff did a really good job responding, but I, I'm just, I'm finding it confusing. And I just, I, I think I might just abstain. So I just want to let you all know that I'm just, I'm feeling a little overwhelmed with all the information. And typically, when, when we receive testimony, you know, I'm always looking for the, the, it to address the, the approval criteria because that is our job. Like, we don't get to decide if somebody likes something or doesn't like something. It doesn't matter how we personally feel. But I, because I feel like some of the testimony did specifically address it and I just not, I, I'm not comfortable with what questions I have to ask and how to ask them. And I'm just a little bit, I'm, I'm a little overwhelmed with the information, to be perfectly honest. So I don't feel comfortable approving something that I don't actually really truly understand. And so I'm just, just, I hope nobody's offended. I just don't, I don't feel comfortable approving it. So I'm just going to abstain. So I won't, I won't object, but I, I am going to abstain.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Edwards. And Commissioner Beeson, go back to you.
Yeah, and I guess kind of in line with that, I, I understand what Commissioner Edwards is saying. I, I'm, I found myself, I, I went through all of the material. I, I didn't, as I said, I thought it was pretty comprehensive, well organized. And all the material that came out subsequent to the public hearing, I thought was pretty focused and on point about what I thought all the testimony was. So I was feeling pretty, I'm feeling pretty good about that. I think in, in general, when I, when I went through it and looked at it, and again, as I listened to what, some of the concerns from the neighbors, you know, it, it appeared to me what the university is doing is just going through it. They've gone through an extensive planning process here. It's gone over decades, I guess, but they certainly went back and revisited recently something they had done a number of years ago in terms of looking how the campus is laid out, where the housing is, how they, and how they approached that. And at this point, looking to try to have more housing on campus, accommodate more students on campus. And I, I think from my perspective, that makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons in the community in terms of how we want to approach housing and approach maybe the idea of density or using land in our community as efficiently as we can. All, all of those sorts of considerations. And I think this, this kind of addresses that for me. I, there, all of this, I think, as I understand, it's based upon their, the need for, as they go forward over the next years for increased student housing based on their projections for increased enrollment. I, I, it seemed to me that as I, as I went through it, it, it felt appropriate for the city, for us as a planning commission, to go ahead and approve this as a recommendation of the council that they approve it. But it, it made sense that it's, it's, it's kind of appropriate in 2025 to revisit this. That this area over here in the southeast portion, call it the southeast, kind of the east-south portion of the campus, which by the way, I think is about 10 acres coming out of the material. I saw, seen some different sizes in some of the testimony and some of the material out there. But it's been, it's been considered for housing over time and considered for increased density. And I think their view now is going back and looking at it in that respect. I talked a bit about the transition zone and the, the 45 foot height. I, I think Commissioner Lear said it was brought up last time that one of the benefits of this or one of the rationales or justifications is that could consider this can, can potentially reduce the demand for off campus housing. And it talked about it being a more efficient, efficient use of the land. And, and I, I do, I would echo what I think was previously said. This, I think, I would think of this in terms of what we're doing in the city as being a important part of our efforts to increase housing supply. It's all on university property there. The university is not, there's no change. I already mentioned no change in the footprint. There's not, they're not looking to expand the size of the university. They're using property that's there. And so it, it kind of strikes me that, yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm ready to support the, the motion and move it forward with the recommendation to the council that they, they approve it.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeson. Commissioner Bailey?
Perhaps, perhaps Bray could remind me, do we have information that this allows the university to address projected housing needs for some period of time, 10 years, 20 years? What, what does this get them to? Do we know?
So there is, one of the first things that comes to mind is the university, the applicant submitted a document into the record during the third open record period, I believe, might have been the second open record period, that speaks to historic enrollment numbers and talks a little bit about that projection, I believe. So that is included in the record. But as far as what is proposed to be developed, there are some conceptual level details in the record for concepts of things the university would like to develop if these amendments are approved. But there are no specific plans for development that are in for permit at this time or anything that we're looking at specifically for compliance.
No, but I was wondering, in terms of their planning, since as Commissioner Beeson mentioned, they've been developing their growth and housing plan for 20 years, if I recall correctly. So they probably have some pretty good projections. And I wonder what this gets us to.
As far as if the proposed amendments are approved?
No, if once, assuming this is all approved and they can go ahead with full development and build out, is that a 10 year process or a 20 year process? Or do we have any idea?
I'll have to look in the record for a moment to see if there's any information to respond to that. Jeff, can you think of anything?
I was, Bray, I was actually wondering with your familiarity of the next generation housing plan that the applicant submitted, what level of details included in that in terms of how far they were looking at that to the future? I'm trying to open it at the moment, but.
I will do the same. I can't say off the top of my head. I know there are, I believe that's the document that has conceptual illustrations and some text details about what would be proposed in the future if these amendments are approved. But I don't know about the time period off the top of my head.
Another reason I wonder about it is because of our state requirement to add so much housing and a certain amount per year over the next many years. And this will contribute to that. Then it would be good to have some numeric understanding of what the university housing will provide.
So really quickly, I can just say that the, based on the executive summary in the next gen housing proposal document or the next gen housing plan, it's, talks about forecasts and looking at the next 20 years of development. That's kind of what it's looking at.
I guess I just add that I all agree with Commissioner Beeson's analysis for the most part. And I thought that was a good point, Commissioner Bailey as well. I certainly understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Edwards, too. I just wonder if there's a natural limit to how much a citizen commission like this can interpret technical material without a little bit more substantive planning training perhaps and maybe a bit more time. Based on the material that was presented though, and the articulation of, of why it meets approval requirements and focusing the decision on that, I'm definitely ready to move forward to support it. And I will just say too, that, you know, I totally understand when our neighbors come before us and have concerns about something like this, this can potentially change the composition of the neighborhood. You know, we care a lot about what the folks that live there think and people that have been part of that neighborhood for, you know, decades or if not longer. But, you know, I also agree that, as you noted, Commissioner Bailey, you know, we've got to build more dense housing somewhere. And the response is often that we like that, we just don't want it, we just don't want to look at it. And so, you know, that's something that we're always going to be, I think, confronting on the planning commission, is that tension between kind of maintaining the character as it is and confronting the reality that we've got to continue to build more housing rapidly in order to meet the needs of our state and our community. And so, you know, both on the specific legal focus that we have here and on the public policy side, I'm definitely ready to move forward to support it. But absolutely open for any other comments or deliberation or questions. So just want to continue to open it up if anybody else has anything else they'd like to say. Seeing no more comments, so I guess we'll move on to a vote at this point. All of those who are in favor of adopting the motion as provided by Commissioner Bailey, please raise your hands. And those opposed and abstentions. So by a vote of four to zero to one, the motion passes and the recommendation is moved on to city council. So thank you all. I'd like to move on and conclude for tonight in terms of that part of the agenda and move on to our next agenda item, which is on public health standards. And that is the deliberations and possible action on public health standards as presented in a previous meeting. For that next agenda item, I'd like to turn it over to Reed Werner for a brief introduction and then we'll jump into deliberations. And then is that, is that going to be Reed or is somebody else covering that?
It should be Reed. It's possible. He stepped away for a second.
None of his internet goes out in his office and I'm worried that that's also.
Yeah.
Happened at those key moments in my Zoom meetings too.
Never an ideal situation. While he does that, I just want to express appreciation for the density of the materials that, that you were reviewing for the east campus process. And staff is happy to receive feedback on how we might present that information to you in a helpful way, moving forward with any other projects. We'd love to work with you on that. Let me see if I can flag Reed or see if his internet is on. There he is. Great. All right, Reed, we were just trying to, sorry, I don't know if you got cut out there for a minute. Cheryl Lear was just introducing the public health standards topic and handing it over.
Yeah, sorry, I had an automatic reboot of my computer, but I'm back online here. So, all right, so I'll go ahead and share my screen and get started. All right, can you all see the title page?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Reed Werner and I'm the land use supervisor with Building and Permit Services. I'm here to discuss the Public Health Standards Project and the associated land use code amendments. I'm going to start by providing a reminder on some background information for the project, including the direction that the city council provided back in June. I'll then cover the most recent update of the land use code amendments, version three, and will highlight an example of a situation where those code changes would actually help close a regulatory gap. I'll close with an outline of next steps and will be available to answer any questions. Here's an overview of the project work. We completed the initial public engagement stage of the project earlier this summer. We've also been assessing the existing regulatory scheme at the local, state and federal level in an effort to identify any potential gaps in regulations. The goal was to incorporate the community feedback with the findings of the Eugene specific risk and hazard analysis that the Public Works Sustainability Team has been working on to determine if there are any land use code changes that could appropriately address community concerns. As the risk and hazard analysis was delayed, planning and development staff looked into potential updates that could move forward while we are waiting on that Eugene specific information. We presented a project update at the June 18th, 2025 city council work session and the council passed two motions. The first motion was to move forward with the land use code amendments related to improving coordination with our public health regulatory partners like the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and the L.A.N. Regional Air Protection Agency. These code amendments are the first step in the Public Health Standards Code Amendments and are the topic of tonight's deliberations. The second motion passed by the council directed staff that upon completion of the Eugene specific hazard and risk analysis that we discussed previously, to use those results to inform potential future changes to the land use code. And now to turn to the topic at hand for tonight's deliberations, the proposed land use code amendments. Based on the feedback we received regarding the language and workability of the previous versions of the code amendments, staff have developed an updated approach identified as version three of the draft code amendments. As proposed, a version three requires an applicant to either provide documentation attesting to and identifying all air, land, and water permits required by the Environmental Protection Agency, Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, and/or the L.A.N. Regional Air Protection Agency, or provide documentation that permits are not required for the proposed development. If version three is adopted, the city would develop a form that applicants would use to take to the regulatory agencies and get the permitting requirements for their proposed development that they could then fill out and submit to the city attesting to those required permits. Therefore, it would not put an additional burden on our regulatory partners and it would provide the framework that applicants can use to consult with other agencies and confirm that they are aware of all required permits. Version three also adds noticing requirements for the city. Following submission of a development permit, the city would be required to send notice to the subject regulatory agencies to inform them of the proposed development and what permits the applicant attests are required, if any. The city's noticing requirements would close the feedback loop by informing regulatory agencies of what permits the applicants attest to needing, so that agencies would be able to monitor and track compliance for any discrepancies or potential enforcement matters. While version three constitutes a shift in the approach, which is the self-identification of necessary permits, staff believes that this approach achieves the overarching intent of increased coordination with our public health regulatory partners and improving transparency for industrial developments in the E2, I2, and I3 zones. Additionally, if adopted, version three would result in a more workable approach for all parties, and we have received positive feedback from representatives of the Oregon DEQ and El Rapa indicating increased support for the version three updates. In response to some questions from commissioners about real-life examples of where and how these code amendments would function to close regulatory gaps, I did some digging and found a highly applicable example. The situation involves a nicotine vaping liquid operation that was located in Eugene. They operated from 2015 to 2020 at one I3 heavy industrial zone site and never obtained required DEQ permits for storing, treating, or disposing of hazardous waste. They moved operations to another I3 site in 2020, didn't get a permit to transport hazardous waste that was required by the DEQ, and they didn't obtain any of the required DEQ permits to store, treat, or dispose of hazardous waste at the new site. Then, at some point, someone complained and DEQ began enforcement in 2022. So this is a situation where if, when these applicants came to the city for development permits, if we had that feedback loop where we could ask them to attest to what permits are required, they would have gone to the DEQ and got a list of what permits they needed and would have submitted that to the city, and then we could have sent that back to the DEQ and they would have confirmed that they're actually applying for the correct permits. So there's not a lot of information out there about enforcement when it comes to the DEQ or El Rapa, but the DEQ did have some recent enforcement actions on their website, so I was able to find this specific situation. There seems like there's other situations too where developers do not know of the permitting requirements and just move forward with applications. And so the hope here is that these code amendments would help close that regulatory gap. So next steps is that due to the pivot to a version three, staff recommends keeping the record open for an additional two weeks if the planning commission is interested in that. That would give a chance for a community to respond to version three. Alternatively, the planning commission could move forward with the staff recommendation to recommend version three to the city council. And we have slides for both motions here, and I believe the motion about the recommendation was included in the AIS. We are tentatively scheduled for the city council public hearing on February 17th, 2026. All right, so I have those motions there if you're interested, and I'll kick it back over to Chair Leir. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed. I really appreciate the information and thanks for digging up an example. I'll let Commissioner Edwards jump in. Did you have a question or comment?
Um, yes, thank you, Commissioner Leir. I just, so definitely want to emphasize that I think that is important for another, if folks need to respond to this, this latest version, I do think that that is important. I think as evidenced by the fact that this is, we are now at our third version of language that people are having to respond to, it's complicated. And I just want, you know, in my day job, my, my, my job is to advocate for business. And so I have been inundated in this policy and this, in this action for many months. And Reed can attest, like, we brought a group of businesses together and he and Julie sat down with us and we really, you know, wanted to make sure that we understood what it was and, and that, this is a kind of a situation where normally I am very reliant on the planning staff and their expertise. This crosses into a totally different realm. And what I learned personally by just talking to many, many, many businesses and the regulators is that it's super complicated and just when you think that you figured out the path, you, you run into a barrier that's like, oh, we didn't think of that. And I'll give you an example. A lot of the businesses in the industrial areas are not, there's nothing about their building or their, the land use, it's actually their equipment that needs the permits. And so I just, I find it really, really complicated. So I very much think that we should, at the very least, be keeping the record open so that people can have a chance to, to respond, because it is complicated. I have a question for Reed, because it occurs to me that, and just want to say, appreciate all of the work, because this is not your area of expertise and I know this, and you have been amazing at trying to kind of sort through all this, and I just want to acknowledge how much work that's been gone. But my question has to do with how the city, what, like, what is the mechanism for, to ensure that these agencies will provide whatever documentation, whether it's, you know, to attest that a business isn't compliant, or even, I'm not sure how we're addressing the businesses that don't need permits and how, how do they get documentation? And what is our mechanism, since these agencies do not answer to the city of Eugene? And so I just wanted to give you an opportunity to just kind of speak to that specifically. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, those kind words, Commissioner Edwards. So that is a big reason why we pivoted to this version three. We, we were really looking at the previous requirements about them submitting evidence that they had applied for permits or that they received approvals. And that was getting challenging as far as the timing. Certain permits aren't required until you've already been in operation for a certain amount of time. So what this pivot does is it, at that point, when an applicant is ready to submit a development permit, it triggers a requirement that they would need to go to those three regulatory agencies. And each one of them do have permitting staff on hand that have informal scoping conversations prior to permit submission. So there is mechanism in place where applicants would check with those agencies, provide some scoping information about what, what project they're proposing, and then those agencies would give them a rundown of what permits would be required for that proposed development. They would then take that information, use it on the form that we'll be creating as a city. We'll have contact informations for each agency and the permitting specialist in those agencies about who they can get this information of. They will fill it out on the form and they'll basically attest that we did our due diligence and found out what permits are required for our proposed use. They will submit that to the city. We're not going to be going in there and vetting it to have anything to do with that because, as you said, we aren't the experts on what permits are required or what the processes for those permits will look like. We're going to take their attestation that they've done the due diligence and these are the permits are required. And then we're going to put together a notice that goes back to those regulatory agencies. So that creates that feedback loop, while we'll be telling those agencies, hey, here is the development that this particular applicant is proposing. Here's the permanent information. Here's the scope of work. Here's the site location, so that they can get all the information about what that proposed use is. And then they will then have that trigger that says, okay, yes, we did have these conversations. These people are going through the correct permitting processes. Or maybe it's a situation where they don't even need to have those conversations because applicants have environmental compliance officers on staff and they already know everything that needs to be reviewed. But what we'll be doing is we'll be kicking something back to the agencies, letting them know, this is the information we're getting from the applicant. And then the agencies would, they wouldn't have any obligation to do something about that unless they find out that that's somehow not what they see as being required for that development. So, so that would be putting the ball in their court and then they could highlight any discrepancies or kick it back to the applicant if they don't agree with what those permits were.
And.
And just follow up, sorry, let me just follow up, Jeff, and then I'll let yours one. Like, what is, what is the city's enforcement mechanism? So what if they, what if they were incorrect? Like, what if they issued what they thought was the correct permits and then they found out that they're going to have a number of employees that triggers, you know, DEQ because those trips are going to create, and they didn't know that. They didn't know that they were going to need that when they established their land use approvals, but because now they have X amount of employees and there's this many vehicular trips a day, and this could be into the future. Like, what is our mechanism to then enforce whatever it is that we're, we're placing on these businesses and the regulators for that matter?
Yeah, so, so nothing in version three adds enforcement requirements or capabilities from the city's perspective. What it does is it informs those other regulatory agencies and creates that transparency so that then if they look at do it and find out that we don't agree, that whatever this, like, the instance I had about the nicotine vaping manufacturing, if they got a notice that said, hey, this person says they don't need any permits for their operation, they'd be able to say, hey, actually, they do need a hazardous materials permit. So they would be able to get in contact with that applicant and set them straight at the beginning of the process rather than having to wait for multiple years and waiting for some sort of a complaint to trigger the enforcement mechanism.
Okay, I'll let others go, but I have a couple more questions, but I, thank you.
I have a little clarifying question. I really can appreciate the example, Reed. Was that example of a nicotine vaping company, did they apply for any land use permits that would have triggered this process?
They did. They applied for tenant infill permits. So they did come to the city, they explained what use they were applying for. It was originally, the permits were built out as a shell industrial development site with multiple tenant spaces, but they did come in and get building permits to convert their specific tenant space to the manufacturing operation. But because there was no mechanism or anything in the code, they were just able to start operations when they got their tenant infill permits, but they didn't actually go to the DEQ to find out what permits were, were required under the DEQ's regulations for hazardous materials.
I've, I've got some more questions too, but I'll let Commissioner Beeson jump in.
Okay. I have two, I guess, kind of questions slash issues I need a little help with. I'm, I'm, I'd say I'm generally in support of a version three, might be ready to go, depending on what I hear from other commissioners and what we, I hear from staff. I, one concern I have has to do with process. I'll use the word process. This is a type five, sorry, type four review process. And some of the specific words in there include that we're going to be sure that, I had it kind of highlighted here, that it, it involves a public, it involves public notice, it involves a public hearing, and it involves the opportunity for people to provide comment. So then as I'm going, going back through, we've had version one, version two, and version three. I understand this is pretty complicated. It feels to me like as we go along, we, and I'm using we pretty broadly here, but Reed, and I appreciate all your work on this, but is, we're kind of learning from this as we go. And as Commissioner Edwards says and a few others, it, it's clearly pretty complicated. It's got a lot of aspects or facets and we're learning. I, I think of it kind of evolving. My particular process question is, I don't have all the particular dates right in front of me, but what, we, we came out with a version one. You gave public notice on that, you posted it. We had a public hearing, October 14th or 15th, or whenever it was. On that, on that day, so people were giving comments and people came to do a public hearing. And on that day, you introduced to the planning commission version two, which I also liked a little better than version one, and it sounded like some other people did. And so we went through version two and now it's November 18th. And I've gone back through all the testimony and that, in the different, I guess it's kind of one batch. I'm getting confused with the other one we're working on. But in any event, I've gone through it and now on October, on November 18th, we have a version three. My particular, with that long introduction, my particular question is, under the intent of our own regulations on public hearing and providing opportunity for the community to comment, I, I'm not sure that comments we've had have generally been about previous versions. And this version, I, I, I think this version is essentially different. And I'm, so I'm kind of throwing that out. Does it feel like we've had, given the community? I know we're talking about giving two more weeks and that's all well and good, but I'm just, I, I'm not, I'm not sure it quite fits. It feels like the process is a little out of sync here.
Hey, Lauren has her hand raised.
Lauren, go ahead.
Thanks. So I will just, Florence Summers, Assistant City Attorney. I will start by saying that Planning Commission has a lot of options here, but I will kind of set the stage for your question, Commissioner Beeson. So this is, this is a type five process. Our code identifies it as type five, which provides for a, at least one public hearing before the planning commission and another public hearing before the city council. And the record for this application remains open until the city council makes the final decision on the application. The planning commission, the way that our code is written is that we, and we've talked about this a lot in the past, the planning commission has sort of, we call it a soft close for the record, so that at some point in time, the planning commission has a, kind of a finite amount of information on which to base your recommendation. So when we are talking about leaving the record open or reopening the record for X amount of weeks, that is the planning commission record. The record for the application, all of the information that's going to the city council, who is the final decision maker on the application, is still open, has always been open and will stay open until the city council makes its final decision. So folks can continue to comment, no matter what the planning commission decides, and all of that information will go to the city council. That said, Planning Commission may wish to, because there have been various versions of the proposal, choose to delay the soft close of your record by some period of time to allow for the public to comment on this latest version, which has very recently been publicized, so that you have the opportunity to hear from the public about that version specifically before you make your recommendation to council. But I did want to be clear that.
Okay, thanks.
Record isn't, you, you are not preventing anyone, no matter what decision you make, you are not preventing anyone from commenting. All of their comments will go to the city council and there is still another opportunity for a subsequent public hearing before the city council as well as submission of written comments.
Thanks, yeah. And I, yeah, I know that the comments that come in subsequent to this meeting will go on to the council. on to the council. It was, still feeling a bit to me like if we were to make a decision tonight on version three, we're doing that possibly without hearing from people who may want to weigh in in the next few weeks. So that's a comment I've just put out there. I'll, I'll hold for now. I have one other item to raise when I, I'll get back in the queue. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeson. Pass it on to Commissioner Bailing.
Thank you. Just to clarify, Lauren, I gather we, do we have an option of having another public hearing for the planning commission? Or is our only option to do two, two more weeks of open record for us?
Commissioner Bailing, theoretically, yes. You, the planning commission could hold another public hearing. There is a fair amount of administrative time involved in scheduling and running a public hearing. And I, I would, there's a cost benefit analysis to an additional public hearing versus the opportunity to submit additional comment in writing.
Okay.
But you are not prohibited from having another public hearing. There will, there will certainly be another public hearing before a final decision is made because the council will hold a public hearing.
Right. Okay, thanks. I understand that. And then I have just another little process question for Reed. He gave me a lot of detailed information about how this new process would work in terms of the document, the memo that the city creates. But Reed, when you provide the information of the regulatory agencies and the applicant goes to those agencies, does the permitting person in each of those regulatory agencies sign off on the form or write the permitting on the form? Or are they just giving information to the applicant and then we leave it to the applicant to be truthful in filling out the form and bringing it to the city? You know what I mean? I'd like to just have that extra double check that they fill out what permits may be required and your permitting person at the regulatory agency, you know, checks the box or signs off on that.
Yeah, so, so I mean, what you're asking about would basically be like the, a land use compatibility statement that we send back to the regulatory agencies. And that was something that we floated. However, in talks with the regulatory agencies, that was going to be onerous on their operations and they weren't completely supportive of us coming up with a new requirement that put additional work on those other regulatory agencies to vouch for whatever permits are needed. So that was the thought was that if they have these pre-application scoping conferences that they're already offering applicants to have conversations with the permiters, that the applicants could have those conversations, attest to what permits are required, and then that notice that requirement that the city has would check back in with those regulatory agencies and then they could confirm or identify any potential discrepancies. And I see Jeff shot his hand up, so he probably has something to add.
If I understand, there's no, nothing to stop an applicant that wants to be shady from not filling out all those appropriate permitting requirements on the form they bring to the city, like your DEQ example of the vaping store.
So.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Really, if I can just really briefly jump in here. I mean, the, the whole effort here is about coordination, right? The city is not the enforcement agency. The city is not the regulatory agency for these things. So the whole goal would be exactly in your case of somebody trying to be shady, quote unquote shady. The whole thing is that then we send that, this, hey, they're doing a building permit for this use over to DEQ, who would then be able to identify like, hey, guys, did you know that you need a DEQ permit? Rather than seven years later, DEQ hearing through a complaint process that these people should have had a permit, right? So if somebody is attesting to something or, or no, basically stating, hey, I know that I need these five applications through the DEQ, EPA, and L Rappa. Or if they say, hey, I don't need any permits, then they, we send out this notice. The whole point is so that those regulatory agencies who are the experts in their fields can then reach out to this applicant if they need to. Because, you know, while you might have bad actors, you also have a lot of really respectable companies out there who are just trying to operate and get a building permit. And they honestly, they know what permits they need already. So it's highly likely that in a lot of cases, they don't even need to go talk to these other agencies. They can just fill out our form, turn it in to us with their building permit. And so that's going to be, it's going to be case by case, but it's, what we're trying to provide is an easy path for applicants to say, I don't know what permits I need, so here's the contact information for those people. I'll reach out to them. Or I already know what permits I need. Here they are, city. Please send this off to those, those agencies when you're ready. So it's really about just enhancing coordination and just creating that little flag that can go out there to say, hey, this process is happening. And this new group is, is going to be opening up an operation. I hope that helps to provide just a little bit of clarity around the process.
It does. Thank you. And I just want to add that I'm in favor of keeping our record open for two weeks as previously mentioned.
Commissioner Yang?
So listening to the version three, I felt that if the spirit is to improve coordination, I felt that the version three, it's a step in the right direction. And I felt that the, what we described is intentional. So I thought that was good. But I do felt that it's a, like you said, it's a pivot, you know? It's a new version. It felt different from the previous two versions. So I think that a bit more time to discuss and it's, it's good. But it does feel like a pivot. Well, I want to add, I have a couple of questions. Number one, who is in charge of the navigation of this process of multiple, you know, the city as well as multiple public health regulator partners? Is it just up to the applicants to kind of go from agency to agency to figure it out? And, you know, provided that they have people who help them once you enter the agency? And then I want to ask if there's a centralized place, whether it's online, like a portal or online playground, whatever you call it, a centralized place where it's like a single source of truth, you know, who, who may need these permits or that permit? And also when people turn in, that it can be posted and therefore there's a one place that all these agencies, including the city, can verify and communicate. I just felt that there's a, needs a place that, so we're not just different like silos, but we have a centralized place for all these documents and what's required, what's not, you know, based on the application. Anyway, that's my comment.
Any staff response? Pass it off to Commissioner Edwards then.
Sorry, trying to figure out how to unmute. Thank you. My, well, so, okay, a couple of things. The regulatory agencies are not asking for this coordination. And so I think that my, one of my biggest concerns is the fact that we are placing this level of responsibility on them that we don't, the city has no authority. And so we're assuming that they're okay with providing whatever it needs that our applicants would need, but there is no mechanism to do that. And so I think that that is problematic. The other thing that I'm, I'm mu- much more concerned with is the fact that, you know, the city council looks to us as advisors that, you know, take the time and do the deep dive and make the recommendations to them. And code revisions are very wonky and they, and it takes a lot of time and understanding them really well. This is outside of the land use. We're talking about regulations and air and water quality, things that is not within our purview, not within our staff's purview. So I'm not comfortable even just as saying, you know, here, council, we're recommending this because I just don't feel like we are the experts. I think it's really complicated. That is my biggest takeaway from talking to literally dozens of businesses, trying to understand like, what are all the ways that you are regulated? And you guys would be blown away if you understood how many businesses that you wouldn't even real, you wouldn't even think about having to be regulated because, you know, they use paint or lacquer or whatever. And so it's really, it's much more complicated than even I anticipated. My, I'm inclined to, you know, if, if city council wants to proceed and have a public hearing and whatever else, I, I mean, I'm inclined to not have a formal recommendation from planning commission. And, and maybe even to suggest that they wait for the risk and hazards assessment work to be completed before going in and making changes to the code. Because not only is it really hard to get in line to do those, it's even harder to fix unintended consequences when we, when we screw it up. And so I do think that as, you know, the folks that they kind of look to, to be the citizen experts on these matters, I risk, I, I worry that we risk our reputation as that with city council because they're expecting us to give them recommendations that are, that make sense to us. And we're not there yet. Commissioner Bailing said, I think it was Commissioner Bailing, I apologize, but that we're still, we're still learning and we're still evolving this, this process. We're now on version three and we're probably not done yet. And so I just, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm just sort of sharing openly my thoughts at this moment, but that is where I'm leaning. So thank you for letting me speak.
That's okay with you, Commissioner Beeson. I'd like to jump in as well for a comment. And I'd probably be in the minority here. I'm, I'm disinclined to support this. I really appreciate that the directive came from city council and I think the staff did a great job of trying to respond, you know, to put something on the table. But I do also think it's rushed. I think that was kind of evident by seeing L Rappa kind of come out against this, at least in version two, at the last hearing. And I do worry that it, it is chasing, it's a, it's a solution without really a problem. That it's a way to kind of offer a politically expedient response, but that I think that there's more work that needs to go in before making code changes. So totally appreciate where the city council comes from, is coming from and staff's efforts to meet that request and demand. And that's, you know, that's your job. But I would, I guess, agree with Commissioner Edwards to some extent and some of the other comments that I think that the public, for us to make a recommendation, we should hear what the public has to say about the version that's in front of us. And that, you know, based on the totality of information presented and the testimony so far, I, I'm disinclined to support it even under, you know, under any circumstances, but would definitely like to hear more. Commissioner Beeson?
Yeah, the other comment I wanted to make, I was debating whether to make it, but I guess is to follow up on Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Lear. This afternoon, as I was going through it, I, I'm the one who raised a bit ago, the idea, this has been an evolution. This has been a learning process. This has been an iterative process. We're on version three. I, in a positive constructive sense, I'm not sure there's any reason to think there wouldn't be a version four. And I say that with all seriousness. There's, there's clearly as people are engaged in this and weighing in on it, it's evolving. So I, I'm, I'm also, I think, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I think it may be a good idea at the end of the day to go ahead and have code amendments to do this. I kind of like the version three, but I, I sort of feel like it may not be done yet. So I'm not really inclined tonight to support a recommendation to pass it on to the, to the council at this point. I think, I think the idea of leaving the record open, I understand, I guess, the soft close and that there can be, you know, additional comments that come in. I, I think before the planning commission made a recommendation, it would be really nice to hear from people who really had a chance to weigh in on version three and talk about it and give us comment before we made the recommendation. I, and I, and again, as I said, I think there's, there's the, there's sort of this continued possibility that it, it could change. I'm not, I had a couple of notes here. I want, I just want to be sure. Sorry, sorry. You know, I, 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 I found myself also, I, I understand why we disconnected this from the hazards and risk analysis. I read through that material pretty carefully and there was a desire on the part of the council, as I understand it, to move forward with this part of it. They had the two motions and, but I, the more it goes on, I'm, I'm not sure that there has to be a rush to do it right now. I'm not sure that it's a bad thing to wait. I'm not sure it would be bad to wait till that hazard and risk analysis is done. It may in fact inform some things we want to do with this. So I, 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 I'm, I guess I'd be in favor of us kind of holding off and not proceeding with it at this point. So, thanks.
Commissioner Bailing? It looks like we've got Commissioner Isaacson joining us, so we'll put you on deck.
Thank you. As you may recall, Reed and city staff have been engaged for many months in public outreach and engagement with the public about public health standards. Those of us in the Bethel neighborhood have been irate at living with J H Baxter and the lack of regulation or enforcement for adequate permitting. And the thought of not pursuing anything is totally abhorrent to me. The city council knows and we know, this is just a baby first step. Many more issues will come before us over the next couple of years dealing with public health standards. We need to start somewhere. And I dearly hope we start now with this. If it isn't the perfect solution, fine, we can alter it later on. You know, but the public, including myself, want to see the city take some action. And I, I think it's really critical that we should something forward.
Thanks, Commissioner Bailing. Commissioner Isaacson's joined us now and Commissioner Isaacson, would you have a?
Commissioner Isaacson, if you're trying to speak, you're. Oh goodness.
Apologies, I'm having some unstable internet myself.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. I've been listening to the entire, I just wasn't really well enough to attend yet. I haven't listened to the entire meeting. I wanted to come in because I felt that this is something I could lend some personal thoughts to. My industry, my own personal life is one of the more regulated industries in this state. And I've always really enjoyed having the lux as a guide, if you will, through the different regulatory agencies that, that I have to do, even though it's on some small level. You know, the, the large companies that want to come in here into our city, they're going to have a whole team of lawyers and planners and helpers that help guide them through this whole process. The small business owners who have to navigate the nuance and code and regulations complicates things. And I, I, I want to protect the public. I want to be a good steward of my community and my neighborhood and, and make people feel that I'm a welcome neighbor. But I don't, there has to be a balance because otherwise we're going to have people go elsewhere and that doesn't help us either. And it doesn't mean that we have to be, you know, roll out the red carpet for every business who wants to show up, regardless of whatever they want to do. But it does mean that we have to, to strike that balance. And I, I feel like Commissioner Beeson, Commissioner Edwards, and Commissioner Lear's comments thus far have been spot on. I don't know that we're totally through this process and it feels like that more time is, is needed, especially if that information could help guide us in a more appropriate path. And I'm really struck by Commissioner Edwards' commentary about losing standing both with the public and the, and the, and the council. And that if we just hand this to them and say, yep, that's great, and 10 years from now, five years from now, 20 minutes from now, turns out we missed something. And 10 years from now, five years from now, 20 minutes from now, turns out we missed something. That that bothers me. So that's that's my thoughts.
Thanks, Commissioner Isaacson. Commissioner Edwards, go back to you.
Hey, thanks, Commissioner Lear. I just want to take just a quick second to respond because I I think that Commissioner Bailing touched on something. That is really at the crux of the the concerns. I think that. You know. The problem, the perceived problem, which how how I've heard it described as this incompatibility between industry. And people living in that area. And I think that that is that that situation exists in every city in the country and it is something we've dealt with for. Many, many decades because it turns out people actually wanted to live near the jobs where they worked. People wanted to live near the mill that they worked at because that saved them from having to live in Venida and commute. And so there. There was a reason for that. And and the current process that we have that identifies what businesses are are legally allowed to. And if we are looking to make changes to what types of businesses should operate in what types of zones in Eugene, that is a different process. That is not, that is not a coordination between industry and or between, you know, the businesses and the regulators that regulate them and then the city. And so I just, I think that for me, that codifies that when I hear the intent behind the original motion from council. And the fact that this is, this is intended to be the answer to that. And it's not because nothing about this proposed version three of this policy, this code revision would. Stop a J H Baxter, stop a a a transfer station, any of those things. It would merely require some coordination. And so I do think that it's important to not mislead people in thinking that this is doing something that they are expecting. Because that is a very different process. And I just think that, you know, for the same reason why you're. I mean, I'm I'm at council meetings every other week and I'm hearing what the neighbors are saying and that they are calling this without teeth. Because it is, there isn't teeth that the land use process or the land use can really put into something when they're looking for. Answers in another place. And so I it's also the same. Isn't agree with Commissioner Isaacson. It's just not. Should be the. Expertise. So thank you again for letting me.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Do we have? Of a motion? It sounds like there may be a consensus to keep the record open. Internet myself, even though.
Yes, there did appear to be some hiccup of sorts. We're not exactly sure what. It appears to be outside of the city, but I don't know that for sure.
Seems to be working okay now.
Yes, thank you for your patience while we kind of struggled through that. I'm glad that we're back up.
So it looks like we're waiting for Commissioner. Oh, there's Commissioner Bailing.
Did we just start recording again, Crystal? Or you want to get everybody in the room?
Recording in progress. Okay, it looks like Jeff may have gotten us recording again.
Great. So it looks like, let's see, we've got Commissioner Yang, Commissioner Bailey, Commissioner Isaacson. Commissioner Beeson and Commissioner Edwards. Looks like we've got all of our planning commission back. I'll just say for posterity, we're having some technological problems there. We're now recording and back in session. And then Commissioner Edwards, do you want to continue?
You know, I thank you, Commissioner Lear. I just had a question for Lauren. I think. I I would, you had mentioned that we have a couple of different options and I I've just. I I'd be willing to put a motion out there that reflects some of the comments that I've heard just to see where we're at. It I'm I'm feeling like there there's at least a level of discomfort that the commissioner that the commission. May have in making a formal recommendation to council. I know that they are taking this issue up and so, but I I don't know if you might. Be willing to shepherd this a little bit and and advise. I'm I'm willing to make a motion that reflects that while. You know, we 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 would like to see the record kept open and I I believe that they're going to proceed with a public hearing and all of that, but that that. That maybe the the planning commission does not have a recommendation at this time based. You know, on for version three or whatnot. So anyhow, I know this is kind of clunky, but and oh, there you are.
Commissioner Edwards. The code does require the planning commission to make a recommendation. The for a type five application, which this is. Eugene Consection nine point seven five three five says that following the public hearing, the planning commission shall recommend to the city council. Approval, approval with modifications or denial of the application. And then the recommendation is based on the applicable approval criteria in the land use code. So. Yes, a recommendation is required. The timing of the recommendation is more flexible. So you certainly could choose to reopen the record for some period of time to allow folks to submit additional comment like you've talked about about version three. And as you, I'm sure you remember, the. Kind of the framing of the recommendation is also somewhat flexible. So. Recommendations have been delivered to council in different ways over time, depending on. Kind of how the planning commission is feeling about things. Sometimes, most often, it is just sort of. Well, often it's unanimous, but even if it's not unanimous, it's it's often just sort of the motion that's provided by staff is voted on by planning commission. Or sometimes it is more in the form of a final order or, you know, some sort of written narrative about what the recommendation is. But there've also been times where planning commission has provided a recommendation and then additional information to council. Whether that's in the form of a letter or appearing at the council public hearing to speak to the recommendation. Individual planning commissioners can also provide information to council. It just needs to be clear. You know, whether the information is coming from you as an individual planning commissioner or you're speaking on behalf of the planning commission, but we can talk about how that work. So there there are different ways. It doesn't necessarily just need to be kind of. The planning commission recommends, the planning commission does not recommend. There you can provide more information than that to the council if that is what the body chooses to do.
Do we, do we have a timeline? You mentioned that we we are flexible with the timeline. So is it possible for us to decide that we don't want to make a recommendation until? The completion of the risk and hazards assessment? Or do we have to do something ahead of that? I will.
Would I be tabling it? It was just a little technical question if we do.
So I'll defer a little bit to planning staff in terms of dates and timing and planned council dates and those kinds of things. I think you. It seems to me like you could certainly make a recommendation on. A recommendation on a particular version. So one option could be. You know, if the commission decided that the recommendation was actually. To deny the version put forward by staff and to wait to do something until the hazard and risk analysis was adopted. That, I mean, that is a recommendation. Or it could be a recommendation to that the council approve version three as proposed by staff for the following reasons. Or that the council approve version three with certain changes or or or. In terms of timing, like specific timing, I'll turn it over. I'll look to to staff to talk about what it would mean to. Do something other than leave the record open for a couple of weeks. I think that is calculated into the proposed timing right now, but beyond that, I don't really know.
Thanks, Lauren. Yeah, we, you know, we have December 16th slated as a possible day to bring this back to the planning commission if you choose to hold the record open. I will. I just want to bring a little bit of context to the staff report and what staff's recommendation was. You know, staff recommended a discussion around the potential to keep the record open because anytime we present new information like that, we want you to consider that. However, our recommendation was to move forward with version three. And that's really reflective of the iterative iterative nature of the code amendment process and the fact that we received feedback that said. We need more balance. We need more practicality. We need more, you know, ability to actually implement this. And so. The one, the one thing that I would just say is that as staff has been working diligently to kind of craft this code and recognition of the city council's direction. Following version three. We don't know how much different this can get to balance that out. And so we would definitely. If you do keep the record open, you know, if there's some testimony that provides us some insight and how do we could do this differently, that's great. We would also appreciate any insight or. Comments from the planning commission that might assist us and how this could change to get to any level of support. However, if the inclination is that the planning commission is not in support of this change now. The one thing I just want to say is that the city council has directed us already to. Have this be a two-stage process. So it's, you know, this is gonna, this is the first step. The second step is a hazard risk analysis. The one thing I would request or at least bring to light is that. We kind of want an answer on this first step of the process. That hazard risk analysis is going to happen. As directed by the council or, you know, in whatever form that occurs, it's going to to, we are directed by council to do so. So. I think it's important for the planning commission to come to a recommendation on this stage of the council direction. And the code before us and Lauren, you can tell me if I overset my boundary at all there, providing into that context, but. I'm just, we would be looking to. Either, you know, if you're looking for an approval or looking to recommend approval, that's great. Or if you want to close the book on this chapter and say, well, the next chapter is where we want the action to take, that's fine. We just kind of need to understand what where where we're headed next, if that makes sense.
Thanks, Jeff. Commissioner Beeson?
Yeah, given what Jeff is saying and I and as this conversation has gone along, I I find myself thinking it would be good for us to reconvene on this. You say December 18th, whatever date you said that you've allowed time for it. And we could talk about it one more time and see if we want to advance, recommend version three or do something different. It'd give us all a chance to reflect on it a bit. And also, it would give us a chance to hear from the community about version three, which. Tried to say would make me more comfortable. And so that's what I'd I'd recommend. We reconvene on the 18th and make a decision at that point.
Commissioner Edwards?
Hey, thanks. I think it would be helpful for me to understand what the original motion and I think, I mean, I've read it and I've gone back. I don't have it in front of me, but I think to hear it again. Because what we would be recommending is that that this is our recommendation to answer for that. And I think that we're getting lost in kind of like, what what did they actually ask for? They were looking to address. Just in recollection, address a avoiding another J H Baxter. And so. We would, I would have to be comfortable saying like, yep, this would address that. Because if that's what they're asking for and they're asking for the us to make that recommendation or staff to come back with that recommendation. I think it's, I think it's fair to ask for the language to be represented to us if we are going to reconvene in December 18th. So that we can make sure that we are answering that question and that this, the planning commission agrees that this is how we answer that question. So I I don't expect you to have it in front of you right now, although you probably do, but I think it would just be helpful to revisit it.
I am looking for right now.
And then maybe while we're doing that, Commissioner Bailing?
Yes, I have it in front of me. I'll read it, but I also have to comment. Move to recommend that the Eugene City Council adopt version three of the proposed land use code amendments included as attachment B to this agenda item summary. So my understanding of what triggered this is a desire for improved coordination. Was all about. Improving the coordination. Now, what, oh, what, so what does that provide for us? It gives us. Opportunities to ensure that businesses, large and small, obtain the permits necessary. To function and do businesses. In conjunction with applicable, you know, required permits. As required by those regulatory agencies. I don't think anyone is naive enough to assume. That it will prevent a future J H Baxter. That would have to come several steps further down the road. But it would at least require. Permits. And then the permitting agencies would be the ones overseeing what's happening with those permits within those companies. It's a first step and I think it's a very important first step. And if it allows. Greater coordination and visibility. Then it will be useful.
Thanks, Commissioner Bailing. Well, we've got. I feel like at this point. Jeff, you have a comment? I I I'd like to open up for a motion to keep the record open until December 16th. To give more opportunity to think about this and for people to reflect on it. I don't think we're cruising toward passing a resolution at this point. So it might be more beneficial from the city's view who spent time on it, if you want to see that, to give us some more time to wrap our heads around it and maybe move in that direction. Jeff?
Just to clarify, the meeting would be on December 16th.
Record only be open for two weeks?
That would be much appreciated for staff to coordinate the collection of those materials and get those ready for the agenda item summary. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion then to keep the record open for two additional weeks. Someone wants to spit out the date so it can be clear? Is that what it, until the 5 P M on Tuesday, December 2nd? So it's moved, you see the the text of the motion there on the screen. So moved. Moved to reopen the planning commission record for written submissions until 5 P M on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And all those in favor, could you raise your hand?
Aye.
Thanks, Commissioner Isaacson. Appreciate that. All those opposed, I didn't see anyone not raise their hand, but just to make sure. So it looks like that's going to pass unanimously. And I don't feel that we've got consensus to move forward with any additional action on this at this point. So. Thank you for that. We'll conclude that item for tonight. What are your thoughts here, Alyssa and staff? Should we try to squeeze elections in here? Now we've got Commissioner Isaacson at least, so we're only down one.
Yeah, I would prefer we wait till Remy's here. I mean, I think it would be best if everyone, if we do it at the beginning of the next meeting, I think it's kind of the same as doing it right now. So that'll just give us that time.
Is everybody here going to be available or planning to attend the next meeting? See if we can get everybody?
It's possible I'll be in New York, but I can, I'm sure I can find a pathway to, you know, zoom in. You know, I don't like missing meetings, so.
December 2nd?
Yes, next meeting is December 2nd. And that, well, I can jump into my 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 updates unless you guys want to talk about elections a little bit more.
Yeah, let's just hold off and see if we can get everybody together at the same time. So the final. Item of the evening is items from commission and staff and just pass it back to you, Alyssa.
Okay, just real quick, I'm just gonna give you an update on your next meetings. You've got no meeting on the week of Thanksgiving and then we have meetings the first three Tuesdays in December, so the 2nd, 9th and 16th. The second is kind of an annual meeting at this point on severe rent burden. It's something that's required by state law that we hold a meeting because we, a certain percentage of our population is. Severely rent burdened and we'll add elections to that meeting as well. because we, a certain percentage of our population is severely rent burdened and we'll add elections to that meeting as well. On then Tuesday, the 9th is more housing and jobs actions for urban growth strategies. And those again are removing barriers and, and adding more capacity for housing and jobs inside their urban growth boundaries. So just more information on some of those that'll be in the pack, upcoming packages. And then on the 16th, we have a public hearing and possible action for a refinement plan amendment. And then if all goes well, we would also add the deliberations for public health standards that night as well. And that's the only update I have at this time.
Any other updates from staff? And we did this a little bit in reverse order, but anything to share from fellow planning commissioners, any items or info? Seeing none. Thanks everyone for a great meeting. This meeting of the planning commission is now adjourned. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving if you celebrate.